Good evening and welcome to the December 11, 2023 Mayor Council Work Session. We have four committee briefings tonight, but before we get to that, we need to do a motion for closed executive session, and I'm going to turn it over to Jamil to make that motion.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, I moved that the mayor and city council of the city of Gaithersburg conduct a closed executive session immediately following its session tonight, Monday, December 11, 2023 pursuant to the general provisions article of the annotated Code of Maryland, Section 3-305B1I, to carry out an administrative function. The topic to be discussed is the recruitment plan for the hiring of the new city attorney.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, we will be having that executive session, and I will give further notice that we will not have meetings on either next Monday, December 18, or Monday, December 26, due to our scheduled winter recess, so the next regular meeting of the mayor and council will be on Tuesday, January 2. Yeah. Okay, great. So now we're going to move into our discussion topics. The first briefing we're going to have tonight is from our senior advisory committee, and with us from the committee is Jean Dinwiddie, and from our staff in Parks, Rec and Culture, Keegan Kim.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Jean Dinwiddie, AKA Morris Mom. I'm Chair of the Senior Advisory Committee, and I'd like to say thank you to all of the fellow members of the senior advisory here tonight, and to those who might be in the audience as well, and extend our congratulations to Council Vice President Jim McNulty on his recent election.
Thank you.
Excellent. So these are our committee members, and I would like to, we would all like to extend a really special shout out to our outstanding council liaison, Lisa Henderson.
Thank you.
Yeah, Lisa's been just absolutely wonderful. So demographics of the aging population, I think we all, you've heard this many times now, none of us are getting any younger, and very soon, we will have more older adults than we have children. So not too long, so we're an important, the older adults were an important group. By 2040, one in five residents in the county will be over 55, and one in three, oh, sorry, 65, and one in three will be 55. So I know you've heard this from me before, but I'll just remind you, the reason you want to pay attention to the older adult is because we're workers, we're consumers, we pay taxes, and we vote. So here's some statistics on what's happening at the, at BGC, the Benjamin Gaither Center. Our membership is up from last year, and we have more members using the facility per month. And pre-pandemic, the members, we had about 50% of the membership use the facility on like a day-to-day basis, and now it's around 80%. So that's great news. However, only about 5% of the city's population of older adults belongs to BGC. So that's something we hope to change. And the chart on the right shows you that most of the resident, actually, this thing, most of the resident, the members are me, women in their 70s. So these are some highlights from what's happened at the, at the BGC. You can see fitness remains a area of focus. We've had a lot of different health, we have a mobile dentist, flu shots, blood pressure, there's a pharmacist on call to do medication checkups. We've had a lot of social programs that help the connectedness for older adults, and we know that social isolation can be a problem and wind up costing all of us a lot more money than if we just keep people connected to each other and give them a purpose. Go on. So what's the SAC been doing in this past year? We finished our needs survey, we, we sent out a survey, you all got a report on it, and what we found, we asked for areas of concern. So people were, truthfully, the responses we got were not, did not reflect the diversity of the city, but we expect that the answers would probably be the same if we were able to capture more members in the city. And the concerns were fitness, affordable housing, and nutrition, food insecurity. So we'll be coming back to this because these three things you'll hear again. We have, we collaborated with Montgomery County Commission on Aging at the Active Aging Expo, and we held our annual public forum. We have two SAC members who are commissioners on the Montgomery County Commission on Aging, and Yvette Monroe will be Vice Chair of the COA in 2024. We also, yes, yay of this.
All right.
We also participated in a silent auction with G-Park to raise money, the G-Park Rec Alliance. We, so what we hope to do this year and next, we will, you would be disappointed if I came here and said I wasn't going to advocate for a new center, so I don't want to disappoint any of you. So we will continue to advocate for a new facility, we will conduct a survey on awareness and engagement with the Benjamin Gaither Center. So first, we did a needs survey, and now we'd like to look at how, you know, do you know about the Benjamin Gaither Center, and how are you engaged? We will continue to collaborate with the Commission on Aging, especially now with our wonderful Vice Chair, both roles. We would very much like to recruit members that reflect the city's diverse population. We're all women right now on the SAC, and we know that's not the city's population. We have no Latino representation, and that certainly isn't the, so we're, if you know of anyone who might be interested in serving from a diverse community, let it, let us know. You don't have to be a senior. And we will continue to advocate for issues highlighted in the survey that we took, fitness, housing, nutrition. And with G-Park, our big plan for this coming year is to look at intergenerational centers and programs, and we're going to take a national view and look at both the architecture and the programming, and try and identify sort of what works, what's best practices out there. So that will be our focus in this next year. And we would very much like all of you to come visit us at BGC. And whether that winds up being a council in the communities event, or you just come by for a cup of coffee and to meet the folks, that would be great. So we really would like all of you to come. And we have already started establishing a scholarship program for trips and classes at the Benjamin Gaither Center. We raised some money with, through the G-Park Alliance for scholarships, so we have had a very good year. Want to thank you all so much for funding the feasibility center about a visit, sorry, blah, blah.
We knew what you meant.
Yeah, we knew what I meant because it's right there on the slide. For funding the feasibility study about the new center, really, thank you very much. That was a big deal for us, so thank you. And also, there's a beautiful picture here of the sidewalk safety improvement. It was just last year this time, I was saying, we really need to do something, and that change happened in a very clever manner there, and very quickly, so thank you very much. So our short-term requests, you may remember in our survey, it was fitness, affordable housing, and nutrition. Those were the areas that the older adults identified as areas of concern. So we would like to, addressing fitness, include a membership in the fitness center with membership in the Benjamin Gaither Center. It's not a big dollar ask either, we, we did look at that, so for, to address fitness, that's what we'd like to do. In terms of affordable housing, we want people to stay in Gaithersburg. So I'd like the council to consider property tax credits for long-term property owners. Now that will sadly only address the issue for half of the people in the city, because I think only about half are property owners, but still, we have a lot of long-term residents and people, member of the SAC, who's lived in Gaithersburg a long time in two different homes. And so I would like, we all would like to see some property tax credits, and I know that tomorrow, our new county council president, Andrew Friedson, is introducing a tax credit bill for long-term residents that is going to, as I understand, it's being introduced tomorrow, so it's going to decrease the number of years you need to be in your home, and it, it's means-tested. So, you know, we, it should be the people who can most use that property credit to help them stay. And we would like you to consider subsidizing the senior nutrition program. So right now, we've had, sorry, this is the part where I don't eat lunch at the place, so I have to refer to my notes here. We'd like to expand the program. We've had some difficulty in attracting caterers because there's a low per person per meal reimbursement. We do now have a caterer that's starting this week, I think, through the county, so that may work, but if not, and I know in the past, there have been gaps, the county subsidizes that at, I think, around $750 per meal, and there have been times in the past when there were gaps in the county funding, and we would ask that if that happens, that the city come in and, and help fund those meals for the seniors, especially since nutrition was one of the issues that identified. And it's possible that, I would like to wait and see where we get with our new provider, but if we, if that turns out not to be so satisfactory, that maybe we want to look at increasing the per person per meal reimbursement. So again, not to disappoint, we need a new facility, as you know, and we would very much like to have the needs of older adults included in whatever plans for Lake Forest, and if possible, to be kept abreast. And then before we, before, no questions, before we answer your question to get your feedback, we want to thank Charlene Simpson, Smitty, Carolyn, Keegan, for, and all the staff at the BGC for the marvelous job they're doing. They really are wonderful, and we're fortunate to have such a remarkable team of dedicated professionals, who, taking care of the older adults, who, as a reminder, pay taxes, spend money, and vote. Thank you. Any questions?
All right, great, great presentation, Jean, thank you. And thanks, I see a number of senior advisory committee members here, including our former colleague, Yvette Monroe. And we join you in appreciation for our staff that, and everybody involved who keeps BGC running and keeps these programs going that we're, that we're proud of. Let me start with a question for Tanisha, and she wasn't expecting it, but I'm sure she can handle it. What, what's the latest on the feasibility study for this? Where, where are we?
I believe the RFP is still under review. I'm looking at Carolyn, as last I checked, it was under review.
She's nodding, for the record, she's nodding.
Yeah, so we, we expect to release it, I believe, by the end of the year.
Okay, great, great. I am sure I speak for everybody here when I say we would be delighted to come visit and spend some time at the BGC. If it's going to be more than a couple of us, then we have to advertise it, just to, just because, you know, open meetings and such, but, but if it's, if, if you do one or two of us at a time, then we can really, literally come anytime, and I'm sure everybody would be delighted. Thanks for bringing the, these asks to our attention, the, so when you talk about the fitness center, you're talking about the one at the, at the Activity Center at Port Park?
And there's also one at the Benjamin Gaither Center.
Right.
And you pay.
Oh, you pay extra for that, I see. Okay, I was not even aware of that.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think that total ask, the people who are members of both, it's around $50,000 a year, so, you know, it could be a nice win without a lot of cost.
I don't see Tanisha smiling at that, but.
No, okay, all right, I tried, I tried.
Okay.
I didn't know that $50,000 was a little cost.
Understood. Lisa, you are, you are the liaison, take it away.
I just first want to say congratulations on an incredible presentation. So Jean, fantastic job, thank you. We talked, talked about the food insecurity, which was a surprise to, to us coming back through that survey, so thank you also for addressing that in, in the request, because it's an important piece to, to make sure that, that we're covered. I'm excited about the upcoming year, what you have planned, particularly to, to allow residents to know that the BGC is even there. I think some people don't know it's there, so, so kudos for, for making that, bringing that to attention to the rest of the residents, and I, I'm excited, so thank you, great job.
Thank you.
Questions, comments, Jim?
Thank you, Mary. Jean, thank you for the congratulations, appreciate it. Keegan, good to see you, as always. You know, I too appreciate the, the work of the committee, and I'm interested in seeing where your engagement study goes. You know, I think you might be able to, to take a page from AARP, who gets out in front of folks well into their, sometimes even 30s and 40s. I'm going to be hitting 50 next year, I'm already getting my invitations, like, not ready yet, but, but, you know, I think it's important to, you know, to kind of look at that model and, and think about ways to kind of get in front of people in that pipeline and get them to understand that this is something that they, they can participate in. We are all going to age into this demographic, some sooner than, than later, so I think it is important for, for the community to understand that this is a resource that's available to them, and maybe start bringing down some of that median age, so that people like, understand, oh, I can do this, and, and recognize that you don't have to be, you know, 70, or 80, or 90. I think it's fantastic that we have so many people in their 90s that are taking advantage of it, that's great. One of my, my day job clients is Meals on Wheels America, and working with, you know, the homebound and, and food insecurity, but a number of the programs across the country do have meals in person, you know, where they're part of a community center, whatever, so understanding the importance of nutrition and the kinds of, of providers that we can, to, you know, bring in healthy meals, and the importance of that is very, very much on my mind often, because I'm, I'm working with them on a regular basis. So as, you know, we're looking at the caterers and, and understanding, you know, maybe it is one of those programs that could end up being a partner, you know, just thinking out loud, and because, you know, the way that they develop their meals, they are specifically thinking about, you know, nutrition for, for folks that maybe that is the only meal they're getting that day. So I really think that's really important, and I'm really intrigued by the idea of tax credits, understanding that, you know, everything has a price tag, and how do we offset that? But, you know, I think that it is important for our community to age in place, and to make it easier for them to do so, and, you know, a lot of these individuals have paid off their homes, but their, their costs are going up because the property tax goes up because of the value. So if there are ways, and I'm curious to see what the county bill reads, if there is a way for us to do that that makes sense, I think it's worth exploring. So thank you for bringing that to, to our attention, and just keep up the great work. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
I don't have a question, but I'll always say thank you. It's a great presentation. You know, I, I very much am looking forward to the feasibility study. I know we've been talking about it for a little bit of time, but it seems like it's going to drive a lot of fundamental conversation. Actually, I'm going to look up this way because I've got a tie on. But I appreciate all the good work for all the reasons my, my colleagues have said.
Thanks, Rob. Neil?
All right, so also, let me just add my own kudos, it was a great presentation, really covered a lot of ground, and was very informative. Couple of questions for you. Where, where are you on studying the intergenerational centers and programs? What's involved in that? Is that a staff?
We decided at our last meeting a week or two ago that that would be our focus for next year, so, so we're not too far. I have to say.
So are you gathering information as a committee, or working with staff? What's, what's the plan?
Well, we're going to gather information as a committee. I know Mary has done some research already and found a place in Colorado that seemed to be, so we, so we'll, it'll start, like most research starts these days, with a Google search, I think, and then we'll see. And it, it's going to be not just the archi, you know, like what's the best architecture, what's the best, we want to kind of look at the whole, the whole thing, the programming, all of that.
Okay. And you also mentioned that your, that your, your committee and your, and your, I guess, I think your membership as well doesn't really reflect the diversity of the city. Any thoughts?
Our committee certainly doesn't.
Any thoughts on how to reach out? I mean, that's something that I think I've struggled with in, in the time I've been on the council, and getting more different representation in terms of people coming to meetings and working with us. Have you had any great ideas?
I have, I do not. We struggle with it also on the Commission on Aging. It's, we just aren't reflecting the diversity. I have been, and I understand that's sort of similar across the different committees and commissions in the city and in the county, and I don't have any great ideas.
All right, I was hoping.
Yeah, I was hoping, I was hoping you might. I do have one name that I'm going to reach out to, so that we can at least have someone who speaks Spanish as a native on the committee.
All right.
But she's a young woman, so we'll see. That could also be good.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, you're not done yet. I want to open it up and see if anybody wants to, wants to testify from the public. Do we have anybody here who would like to speak on this topic in the room? Going once, going twice? Okay, hold on, we're going to, we're going to check Zooms. You're almost, you're almost off the hook. If there's anybody on Zoom who'd like to speak on this topic, just use the raise hand feature, and I'll call on you. Going once, going twice, okay, now you're off the hook.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, we are going to have our briefing from the Multicultural Affairs Committee. Anita Cox, representing the committee, and Dorothy Winder.
We have a change.
Oh, okay, Samira Hussain, representing the committee, and Dorothy Winder, from our Parks, Rec and Culture.
Good evening, Mayor Ashman and council members, and congratulations for all the new members and for the election. So Ms. Ward, we go back a long way, and Ms. Brightley, it's nice to see all of you. I'm sitting here for our chair, Anita Cox, she should be on her way here, so it was a last-minute change. My name is Samira Hussain, and I have been a member since 2008, and I'm currently a Vice Chair for Heritage Month. I assist in identifying proclamation recipients, and I am Palestinian-American, and I have lived in Gaithersburg since 1989 with my family. The mission of the Multicultural Affairs Committee is to enrich our city through the promotions of understanding, respect, and appreciation of the many cultures of Gaithersburg. While cultural and ethnic diversity affects people in many aspects of their lives, the committee objectives, objective is to heighten awareness of cultural similarities and differences in our, in order to improve interactions. For over 33 years, MAC has been dedicated to creating an environment and of respect and acceptance by presenting opportunities that both educate and celebrate our city global communities. Through these programs, MAC helps to build bridges between neighbors who often come and vastly different from different world. Next. As a committee, MAC has worked to increase the community awareness of others, and by exposing them to cultures and experiences often different from their own. I can't say enough about the power of this small, yet formidable committee. As you will hear, we have a good balance of experience and new members. This past year, we are working on reaffirming our mission and recently added Vice Chair positions to allow us to concentrate on the areas of heritage, membership, and education. Okay. Let me introduce our committee members. Anita Barra Cox, forgive me for mispronunciation, she's the Chair of the Multicultural Affairs Committee. She joined the Multicultural Affairs Committee in May 19, no, 2021, as a way of utilize her educational knowledge, international experiences, and multilingual abilities to support well-being of the city residents. Mr. Washington Sango has been a member for 16 years. Washington is our Vice Chair for Membership and currently working with the staff to recruit new members. Washington is originally from Cameroon. Ms. Anita is from Uganda originally. Israel Azaya, who joined MAC in 2021, brings a wealth of understanding and acceptance from his previous position as Assistant Pastor of Outreach Missionary Baptist Church in Grove Heights, Illinois. Irenia Benicio has been a member of, since January 23, so it's maybe one year. She was born in Mexico and graduated with her bachelor's degree in Business Administration and from University of Colima in Mexico. She has been a resident of Gaithersburg since 2003. She is the manager of the Coloris Mexican Folk Dance Group and loves to serve and entertain in the community. And we also are joined tonight by our former member, De Bank, and thank you for being Okay, Mike started, okay. Now, you have met the team, let me tell you what we do. MAC works closely with the program coordinators and facility managers of the Parks Creation and Culture Department to, to celebrate the customs, values, and traditions of the diverse citizens of our community. Let me share other programs that we assist with. MAC instrumental in identifying proclamations recipients for each Heritage Month, and working with the staff to develop educational display that are presented in the Activity Center, and especially sharing resources that help programs incorporate and recognize cultural traditions into city programs, such as Gaithersburg Book Festival, the Labor Day Parade, and Jingle Jubilee, which was held in December 2 at our City Hall Concert Pavilion. You may have noticed that if you attended Jingle Jubilee, the Chinese, Mexican, and Indian performances, as well as the heritage tents, so many families enjoyed. MAC is proud to say that the work we have been doing for over 33 years to highlight the city diverse communities during Heritage Months and throughout the year have been impacted not only residents and visitors, but inspired city staff. Staff has created an inclusion community team that meet monthly to share ideas and resources for celebration Heritage Month. We see our influence in the storytime programs offered at the museum, and KC, and concert featured at the City Hall Pavilion. Our exhibits are active in, at the Activity Centers, and presentation offered at the Benjamin Gaither Center. This past year, MAC has recognized the rich diversity of Gaithersburg by acknowledging the following five Heritage Months. Okay, Black History Month. The recognition, the Mayor and City Council Proclamation February 2023 as a Black The recognition, the Mayor and City Council Proclamation February two thousand twenty-three as Black History Month. MAC nominated Ms. Zainab Abbas to receive the proclamation. Ms. Abbas is a Gaithersburg resident and founder of Sytec Two U Inc., a nonprofit and that provides an under-presented K through twelve students access to quality, innovative STEAM, STEM, maybe, education. MAC collaborated with MAC staff liaisons and the Community Museum staff to present an exhibit that depicted the journey of Black people from sixteen nineteen until today. In other areas of the city, the Community Museum kicked off the Gaithersburg History Project with a deep dive into the stories and history of the city Black residents over the next five years. Several public programs were given last year by the Black History Researchers, Tony Cohen. Black History was a theme of the, some of the city's storytime programs, a film presentation at the Arts Barn and the children movie at KC Community Center. Next. The Arab Heritage Month. Arab American Month is in April. The proclamation recipient was Dr. Shazza Ahmed. She was born in Sudan. Dr. Ahmed immigrated to US in two thousand and four through the lottery system. Dr. Ahmed is employed by MCPS as a parent educator for children with special needs. In celebration of the Arab Heritage Month, there was an art and education display about Arab Americans at the Activity Center with a great number of visitors. Other programs include a tasty, a tasty books at KC and iftar meal at the Benjamin Gaither Center and, and the museum held a program on Arab board games. Asian American and Pacific Islander American Month recognition. The Mayor and City Council proclaimed May two thousand twenty-three as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. The proclamation recipient was Dr. Gary Lee, who has been working and living in Gaithersburg since he first came to Maryland and to join Dr. Robert Gallo team at NIH nineteen ninety-one. In addition to his busy professional job, he has been involved in numerous community events, activities, and organizations. In two thousand eight, he was elected to be president of the Chinese Alumni Association in greater Washington DC. Is one of the largest Chinese organization in the area. For this Heritage Month, the Activity Center included a beautiful exhibit of work at the harmonious art group, a group of tradition and not traditional, not so traditional Asian artists and another education display. Hispanic Heritage Month. When the leaves turn gold and orange, you know it's time for more than pumpkin. The Mayor and City Council proclaimed September fifteen through October fifteen as Hispanic Heritage Month in the city. The proclamation recipient was our own new MAC member, Irania Benicio. As stated previously, Irania Benicio has been a member of this committee since January twenty-three. She has been a resident of Gaithersburg since two thousand and three. She was born in Mexico and is a manager of the folk dance group. The education display was created in two thousand twenty-two by Emily Easton, a University of Maryland scholar, the Community Museum, MAC staff, and MAC, and Dr. Maria Spurn, a professor of anthology at Montgomery College. This display depicts the story of, the stories of one point five generation Latino immigrants in Gaithersburg. One point five, as they are known, are children who will remain in their home countries when their parents immigrate to the United States and follow later, usually during adolescence. Other programs around the city included an Hispanic festival at Benjamin Gaither Center, storytime, art exhibit, and movie, and the movie. A little later, in October, Irania showed a very special costume from her homeland in Mexico, the day of the dead altar. Native American Heritage Month. In two thousand twenty-three, the city recognized November as Native American Heritage Month. There was no recipient for the proclamation. An education display at the Activity Center, it traced the story of Native Americans in Maryland and especially in our area. Special Events Recognition, Heritage Anytime. As you have seen, MAC celebrates the histories, the histories and contributions of our global citizens at each Heritage Month. But we also encourage staff to present global programs throughout the year. MAC members participated in the multicultural pavilion at the City of Gaithersburg Book Festival. And the book festival also held the Wali Festival. This is an Indian holiday, and the city rang the amazing, I'm sorry, amazing voices of the annual jubilation of Day Gospel Concert in June. I hope you attend Jingle Jubilee held on Saturday, December second. MAC assisted in identifying diverse talent to perform and members even hosted tents where participants could explore other cultures. Looking forward, goals and visions. Thank you for letting me share our year in review. Now let's look forward to MAC goals for twenty twenty-four. First, expand membership and include a broader range of cultural presentations. And I was just told we have two new members, my staff, start with us in January. Continue to provide program, programming on the rich cultural diversity of Gaithersburg and inspire appreciation and respect for cultural differences. Continue to partner with city committees, parks, and recreation and culture, and outside organization and group to develop and provide inclusive programs. Teach more community members and promote understanding, respect, and appreciation for the many cultures that all Gaithersburg home. And this is thank you, and thank you for your support. The Multicultural Affairs Committee welcomes any questions and comments. And if I may ask our chairwoman to sit here for, to answer any questions.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Before, before I say anything, did you, since you're here, I wanted to give you a chance, if you wanted to say anything, go right ahead.
I think everything I wanted to say pretty much was in these documents right here. But I had a work commitment that didn't allow me to come on time, so I apologize. So she stepped up to help me out.
No problem. Samira, thank you for the presentation. I want to thank all the members of the committee. I want to thank Dorothy and all staff who support what you guys do. It's a proud thing that we do each month when we do these proclamations and recognize these different cultures within our city. It is a point of pride for us and has been for a long, long time, how diverse Gaithersburg is and how many different cultures call this city home. It's a wonderful thing. So thank you all for helping us celebrate and recognize that on an ongoing basis. Do we have any questions, comments? Jim, and then Lisa.
Thank you, Mayor. Samira, thank you for stepping in. Appreciate that. Dorothy, Anita, great to see you both. I so appreciate all the work that the committee does to bring these events to us. I had the opportunity to attend a number of them, including Jubilation Day, including Jingle Jubilee. And it's always just so wonderful to see that culture coming by. I know, Jed, you always have a saying, and I can't remember off the top of my head, about, about it just, you know, a city is, is more than just a collecting, a collection of buildings. It is that culture that really makes it a community. And, you know, these events really do distinguish Gaithersburg from, from the rest of the county, from the rest of Maryland. And it's one of the things that I really enjoy about living here. So thank you, great work. I look forward to seeing what you have in store for twenty twenty-four. And thank you for, for giving everybody a recap of all the great work that you've done for the past year.
Thanks, Jim. Lisa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Samira, for stepping in and going through that great presentation. Hello, Dorothy, it's always good to see you. And Anita, welcome. I'm, I don't know when you guys sleep, honestly, because the events that you bring to the city are, it's not just the cultural events. I learn something every time because there's also an educational component to it as well, which, which I absolutely appreciate. I, I think the Gospel Day Jubilation may be one of my favorites. I'm not sure because a lot, a lot of them rank up, but then the jingle, I always want to say jingle, jingle, I'm not going to say it this time. The Jingle Jubilee also, so I, I don't know. Black History Month, Hispanic, well, maybe them all. So thank you for bringing, for bringing that education as well. I, I'm interested to know, where do you see, particularly in this upcoming year, gaps that you want to fill? Because you're, you're covering so much.
In terms of gaps we would like to fill, I think we are going through as a committee, a period of reflection on what we do, and trying either to narrow that down to something that we do more specifically, or perhaps we define better in terms of what we do. Because we are a small team, and we also are obviously spread thin, but over very many different types of events that don't necessarily interconnect. So I think we're going through a period of like sitting down and refining what it is we do. So in that exercise, I think we'll be able to see gaps that then we'll work to, to, what shall I say? To talk around and redefine and then focus in on what it is we want to do.
Okay, all right. Thank you, I look forward to it. Thank you.
Neil.
Okay, so again, thanks for another great presentation and for all the good work that you folks are doing. You know, for a small group, you punch above your weight. You've got to have a lot of events out there, and it's pretty, it's really impressive. And, and I mean, it's great that you bring this out, and I know the events are well-attended and you're, you know, really helping to educate our, our people. So I'd ask the question to the senior committee, and I'm going to ask it to you folks because you're, you're more on point, I guess, is, you know, if you can think of a way that we can get more participation from various diverse groups in the city and, and city functions, it would really be great. Maybe as you're reaching out and doing these events, you can twist some arms and get people to sign up and, and help us more. Because, you know, we're just, we're seeing some of the same faces here over and over again, and it would be nice to get representation that's more, more covers the diverse nature of our city. I'm going to throw that on your plate because you don't have enough to do.
Thank you, councilmember. Actually, what we are doing is that we're reaching out into communities. I think we're going to be calling ourselves, maybe branding ourselves, as bridge builders. So with that, we're going to be working to go into other events that other communities or groups have, so that there's some sort of synergy that we can build on and maybe through that find some people that might be willing to join and work. Because there's joining, but when you join, you have to work. So we want to make sure that we have the right people on the team that will help us work.
We have created like a bookmark type and has summarized the Multicultural Affairs Committee in the back. And I'm, we made sure, when I had the tents in Saturday, everybody got that bookmark in their hand. So hopefully, we'll have more people to come forward and know more about us.
Well, the bookmark is requesting participation from the community. So, yeah.
Yeah, that, it also, let me just speak, that bookmark also by, put that bookmark together, because when you go out, sometimes you talk too much and people leave, they have so much, they don't take nothing with them. You take a small bookmark with all your, your mission, your statements and things on it, they can take it there and then they can call you later. And that bookmark plays a good part in what we will be doing forward and giving out to people to, to step forward.
All right, sounds great. You should think about bookmarks for your event.
Rob.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I don't have much to add other than the, the thanks and accolades that have already been given. On the outreach point, you know, I, I, I think the place you can start, actually Dorothy does start because she messages me every month about this. I need to start showing up, and so that's my promise in twenty twenty-four is to attend the meetings. Unfortunately, Tuesday evenings are tough for me, but I, I can try to shift stuff around and actually show up. That'll be my promise.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have anybody here tonight that would like to come to the podium and speak on this topic? Not seeing anybody here. Let me check on Zoom.
But I have a question too.
Okay, go right ahead.
Um, I do a lot of things with Montgomery County, and they really want to team up with us. And I just want to know if it's okay if we can do like events together. Because we, we, I do it in the county, I have great turnout and facilities is there and, and they would like to come to Gaithersburg because they said our, our Multicultural Affairs Committee, they don't go out to the city. So they said they're willing to come, so this is something to consider.
Well, this would be, that would be a staff decision. It would be a coordination of staff. So we will defer to Dorothy and Carolyn and Tanisha on, on that question. But I, I don't see why there'd be any objections.
No, no objections, I'm just, I guess, the, the timing or, I don't, I mean, you know, budget issues and things. Because, okay, that, that will be good because instead of duplicating the efforts here and there, we can just make big, huge events. Because I used to sit in the Middle Eastern Advisory Group. I'm a friend now because I resigned, it's just too much that I have to deal with. And so we do, we do a lot of activities through that, and then also I do with my Arab American community. So, and we have, we have a great support from the Community Partnership Office. Diane.
That's great to know. Thank you. Go ahead.
Can I just close by saying that we look forward to growing next year? And I just wanted to say on behalf of the committee that we're grateful for your support as mayor and as the council, and to thank councilmember McNulty, councilmember Henderson, councilmember Harris, councilmember Mu for your questions, and that I will be looking for an appointment to see you, councilmember Mu, very soon, before the new year, so we can set up some good times when we can meet.
Excellent. Now, before you go, is there any, I'm, I'm looking at our Zoom audience, is there anybody on Zoom who would like to speak? If so, use the raise hand function. Going once, going twice? Okay, not seeing any hands go up. Thank you guys very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, it's great.
Okay, next, we have our briefing from the Cultural Arts Advisory Committee. And presenting on behalf of the committee is John Moragello, and here on, for our staff is Shelley Williams.
All set? All right. Good evening, Mayor Ashman, councilmembers, and Ms. Brightley and Ms. Board. My name is John Moragello. I am the Chair of the Gaithersburg Cultural Arts Advisory Committee, or CAAC, and have the pleasure of serving with Vice President Jim McNulty. I'm also the President and Artistic Director of Best Medicine Rep, a nonprofit professional theater company headquartered in Gaithersburg. I'm delighted to be here tonight to update you on the accomplishments of the CAAC and the activities we support. The CAAC is comprised of nine members who are drawn from the community and represent a range of cultural arts interests and experiences. We are saying farewell to Patrick Opitz, who has been on the committee since January twenty twenty. During those four years, Patrick has been a strong voice for the film community and assisted Arts Barn staff in launching an evening of short films by local filmmakers. Patrick's participation in CAAC has spurred staff to explore the feasibility of a Gaithersburg Film Festival. Thank you, Patrick. We also have two new members to introduce tonight, Chris Wallace and Hiral Joshi. Chris is an independent Chris is an independent filmmaker and since moving to the area in 2020 from San Francisco, is a multimedia producer, director, and writer for Montgomery County Public Schools. Herald has been an Arts Barn instructor since 2017 and is on the faculty of several other art centers in the county. She holds leadership positions with Artists on Market and the Montgomery Art Association. It is the mission of the CAAC to advise the mayor's, council, and city staff on cultural programs and initiatives that enhance the quality of life in Gaithersburg, support opportunities for artistic expression, and foster a flourishing creative environment that reflects the city's pride in and commitment to the diversity and inclusion. The CAAC accomplishes this mission by reviewing and advocating for objectives stated in the cultural arts section of the PRC Element of the City Master Plan, advising staff on public art projects, and providing guidance to this august body on arts and cultural constraints and opportunities. I am pleased to share with you CAAC's involvement over the past year. Tonight, I will summarize activities relating to Gaithersburg's flourishing cultural community, the Community Museum, Arts in Public Places and the city's robust gallery program, the Arts Barn Legacy Campaign, and achievements in diversity, equity, inclusion, and access. In early November, Gaithersburg, along with Frederick and Rockville, was named the seventh most vibrant arts community in the top 20 large communities category by SMU Data Arts. The report found that the Gaithersburg Frederick-Rockville Corridor scored in the top 1% of measures. In fact, we are number two in government support, number nine in compensation to artists, and number 10 in contributed revenue. Sandwiched between Minneapolis-St. Paul at number six and Nashville at number eight, the Gaithersburg Frederick-Rockville Corridor offers residents and visitors a wealth of arts and cultural programming provided by city and county governments, as well as a plethora of individual artists and scholars and nonprofit arts and humanities groups. Let me share the impact statistics for programs exclusively from the city of Gaithersburg. This chart does not include the arts and cultural programs offered by other groups like Metropolitan Ballet Theater and Best Medicine Rep, or other independent artists, scholars, arts groups, history and heritage associations. Last year's arts and culture programs offered by the city drew 273,000 participants. That's almost a return to pre-pandemic attendance levels of 300,000. Just a few highlights from this chart. Arts education programs served over 1,200 children and adults. Nearly 500 visual artists exhibited in the city's four galleries and sold $10,000 in artwork. 7,838 patrons attended Arts on the Greens Performing Arts Programs at the Arts Barn and Kentland's Mansion. Large festivals like Winter Lights, Oktoberfest, and of course the Gaithersburg Book Festival drew 156,487 attendees. Voluntarism is high in Gaithersburg with almost 2,300 adults and youth giving 16,500 hours of their time. Our community museum, farmers' markets, parades, and festivals, observances and, and public art all contribute to the vibrancy that earned Gaithersburg a place in the top vibrant communities. The Community Museum Complex and the Latitude Observatory play a key role in attracting visitors and residents to Old Town while offering creative and educational programs that are free or low cost. A small but dedicated staff have established the museum's credibility with statewide history organizations, federal grantors, and with national science and space, space organizations such as NASA, Space Telescope Science Institute, NIST, and the Night Sky Network. Last summer, the museum was awarded placement in the Franklin Institute's Science in the Summer Program and partnered with the city's Youth Services Program to provide free science experiences to students from underserved communities. The museum's innovative research initiative, the Gaithersburg History Project, is wrapping up its Black Gaithersburg Research Component this year and will launch the next research phase, Latino Gaithersburg, in the winter. The museum and G-Park won a prestigious Institute of Museums and Library Services Inspire Grant. This two-year grant of $45,000 will underwrite the creation of engaging programs and interpretation for this project so that we can broadly share in multiple languages the key findings of the research. The Art in Public Places Team, which includes members of the CAAC, have been busy this year with community engagement projects, ongoing projects, advising developers, and maximizing external funding to protect the city's considerable investment in public art. Here are a few highlights. The Montgomery County Collaboration Council contracted with the city to manage a public art installation for zip code 20877 that promotes The Basics, an international movement that supports early learning and brain development for all children. Walter Park on Cedar Avenue was designated as the location for this art installation and several, several community engagement sessions were held to discuss concepts and artists. Becky Borland was selected to receive the commission. Her design concept incorporates the tenets of The Basics into the social hub of any playground, the swing area. Becky's practical and beautiful design was inspired by the bright colors and traditional cut paper or papel picado patterns. Staff anticipate breaking ground on this project later in 2024. This is Gaithersburg Art Collection. We'll greet visitors when they enter the main lobby of the new municipal building at 16 South Summit Avenue and will visually demonstrate the first outcome of the city's new strategic plan that all members of the community feel safe, welcomed, and engaged. Artwork has been purchased and is awaiting framing before hanging in the new building. The Gateway to Gaithersburg concept, created by Vicky Scurry, a nationally known public artist, is under review by the Maryland Department of Transportation. A permit application was submitted by the city in November of 2022, but has not yet been approved. Staff are exploring other city-owned locations for this sculpture. A community engagement process was held, was held to develop a concept for the Father Cuddy Underpass mural. Maryland artist Daniel Katz Hernandez worked with youth and seniors to develop the concept which would be painted or printed on six metal panels and installed in the underpass. MDOT has provided documents and a permit application for the city to complete and submit over the next few weeks. We are hopeful that this project will get underway soon. The mosaic trail markers designed for Morrison-Borah Parks by artist Karine Kuroga and students at Gaithersburg Middle School will be installed in the summer. A metal fabricator is creating the armature that will hold the mosaic panels. CAAC members played a key role in evaluating public art concepts for local developers, including the Matan BioLife Campus on Frederick Avenue, a mural for the Barnes &amp; Noble in Rio, a mural for the Kentland's Market Square, and a new mural for the Walnut Hill Shopping Center on Frederick Avenue. In FY22, public art staff initiated a program to assess 10 art installations owned by the city and to address maintenance and repair issues. The city received a $5,000 conservation grant from Maryland State Arts Council to further this work by developing a digital collection catalog and contracting with conservator Howard, conservator Howard Wellman to clean and repair two artworks. The circle of acanthus leaf chairs at Main Street Pavilion in the Kentlands and bones, sometimes called three dogs, at Green Park. The city's exhibition program has grown to include four rotating galleries showing regional visual artists. In 2023, 457 artists showed in 20 exhibitions at the Arts Barn, Activity Center, Benjamin Gaither Center, and Kentland's Mansion. Diversity, equity, inclusion, and access are key values to this program. Open calls to artists are broadly promoted, exhibiting artists range from emerging artists to highly experienced professionals. Additional rotating galleries will be added when 16 South Summit Avenue opens. Meeting master plan and strategic plan goals for diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility are at the forefront of arts and culture programming efforts. Parks, Recreation, and Culture staff are investing in cultural competency training to better understand how to serve and engage the city's diverse citizens. The cultural arts program is successful in attracting diverse volunteers from the community and enjoys a great partnership with the student union and youth centers who provide invaluable assistance at events like Jingle Jubilee, Summer Fest, and more. One of the charges of the CAAC is to evaluate whether city programs are meeting the cultural art goals of the master plan, especially as it relates to DEIA goals. We are pleased to report that cultural arts programming staff work closely with artists and arts and humanities groups as diverse as the Latino Art League and the Bollywood Dance Dancers to showcase the diversity for which our community is known. Lastly, thanks to the work of the CAAC and the Multicultural Affairs Committee, or MAC. Programming staff from across Parks, Recreation, and Culture have formed an informal group, the Inclusion Community Team, to share resources and plan events during the five heritage months, as well as throughout the year. Looking forward, the CAAC has five strategic goals for 2024. Number one, support city equity initiatives from recruiting diverse committee members to ensuring equity in the public art program and other arts and cultural programs. Two, to continue to participate as panelists in the selection of artists and concepts for the city's Art in Public Places program. Three, liaise with G-Park and other city committees to expand outreach and service. Four, be the city's eyes and ears in the community to report on arts and cultural trends, needs, and opportunities. Five, and finish evaluating the remaining cultural arts objectives of the master plan. In closing, thank you for the opportunity to provide a briefing on the CAAC's activities of the past year. I will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
John, thank you so much. Great presentation, as always. I want to first thank, I see Bev in the back. I want to, I want to thank our committee members, our staff. This is the, the thing that Jim, Jim was quoting me on, was about arts because it, you know, a city is just a, it's a collection of streets and avenues and buildings until we have a, a culture that ties us together and it becomes a community then. And I used to say that in a more pithy way, but I, I wasn't, I wasn't thinking about that till Jim brought that up. And then your presentation happened to come up. I'm delighted to hear that we're ahead of Nashville in terms of, and I, I saw the study. I read, I read that study. It's a per capita thing. Obviously, we don't have more going on culturally in total, just like raw numbers, than Nashville. But on a per capita basis, we have more arts things going on and I really appreciate that. My sister lives in Nashville, so I'm going to talk a little trash at the next gathering.
I want to bring down St. Paul.
There you go. Yeah, we're after you, St. Paul. Jim.
Thank you, Mayor. John, thank you so much. Great job with the presentation. Shelley, thank you for all your support of all the efforts. Another, maybe not as small, but certainly mighty committee and all of the work that you all do. Apologize for missing the last meeting because my niece was actually performing a violin recital. So I figured that was an appropriate reason to miss a, a CAAC meeting. But I, I'm excited as well for just the recognition that the city, in conjunction with Frederick and, and Rockville, but we know who's driving that train, right? As the train goes by, which is kind of funny. But I, I've been, I've been excited to be able to, you know, as projects are coming up and bringing up the, the idea of public art and, and seeing how receptive the, the people who are investing in our city are. And it's been great to see so many of those projects come to life this past year as, you know, out there taking pictures of the, the Barnes &amp; Noble installation and being able to introduce the Bollywood dancers was a blast at the Arts Barn. I can't wait to see the Father Cuddy project. Can't wait to see the Gateway Project coming to life. So much of what this committee does is such a highly visible thing for our city. And, you know, just like the Multicultural Committee is a reflection of that vibrancy of this culture. So please keep up the great work. Please keep eyes and ears open for other opportunities as I will do. I'm definitely an advocate for, for the arts and trying to, to keep my eyes open for opportunities. And, and thank you to all the committee members. And I think the, the crowning achievement will be when we get 16 South Summit open and be able to have that wonderful art that is just waiting for the, the public to see it. And I know we all look forward to being able to, to cut that ribbon for sure. So keep up the great work and thank you.
Lisa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, John, for your presentation and Shelley for always for your great work. This is exciting. The focus on equity and inclusion, bravo, bravo. Way to go. I live near Green Park, the three dogs. I, I love, I love that area. So I'm glad it's getting a, a, a little facelift there. So to keep it, keep it strong. Whenever my friends come from out of town and come here, they always talk about how beautiful the city is. And they, they, like, they can never really put their finger on it because it's everything. It, it's the aesthetics, the atmosphere. So, so thank you for giving me the bragging rights that I have. Great job.
Rob Wood.
Sure. And thanks for the presentation. I guess with, with all the committees that have come forward tonight, it shows all the wonderful things that go on our community. Just, I guess, one question, and maybe I saw this on your Facebook page, John, about some, some recent study that showed that Frederick-Rockville-Gaithersburg was like up there with like Milan and Paris as far as arts funding.
That could be per capita again.
It was something like top five in the country, which I know Milan and Paris aren't.
I, I would have to go back.
Yeah, right.
I, I would have to go back through my Facebook feed to find out exactly what that is.
Yeah, I think it was like Wallet Hub or something.
Yeah.
Wallet Hub.
Yeah.
Look at that.
I, I was shocked. It was like New York, San Francisco, and then it was the greater Frederick-Rockville-Gaithersburg area.
Shelley's like, I'm not seeing that in my budget.
Well, I, I, I do know. I, I quoted this statistic to Shelley earlier. I mean, the, the DC area, you know, as a theater person, this area is one of only five areas in the entire country where you can make a living as an actor. With New York, San Francisco, LA, Chicago, the DC area, and maybe now Atlanta because Marvel lives there. But, and, you know, some of it is because we have, you know, so much buy-in from local governments and the community itself. So thank you for all that you do.
Sure. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to comment, ask questions? And not seeing anybody. Let me just check Zoom. If there's anybody on Zoom who would like to speak, just use the raise hand function. Not seeing any.
Just a slight alibi. November 15, 2023, Gaithersburg Frederick-Rockville recognized the seventh most arts vibrant community in the United States.
Oh, well, that, that we talked about.
Yeah.
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 So, yeah, that's, so, yeah.
We're ahead of Nashville.
Ahead of Nashville, behind St. Paul.
Yeah.
Minneapolis.
Minneapolis, okay.
It takes both of them, Minneapolis and St. Paul to beat us.
Exactly.
All right. Thank you guys very much. We're gonna go on to our final presentation. G-Park, and it looks like Tracy Rulo is going to be presenting on behalf of G-Park, and Shelley will stay at the table on behalf of staff.
It feels sort of like a baseball game, the way they're saying that.
You're the catcher.
Yeah, I'm in, I'm in the, I'm in here. I got here. Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Ashman, council members, as well as Ms. Brierly and Ms. Borg. Nice to see you all, and congratulations to all of our newly elected and re-elected council members. My name is Tracy Rulo. I've lived in Gaithersburg for about 15 years, a little bit more, actually. I serve as a member of the governing board of the Gaithersburg, Gaithersburg Parks, Arts, and Recreation Corporation, which is a mouthful, so we say G-Park. And I'm also the chair of the Parks Alliance. I've been a member of the board since 2018, and I'm pleased to be here tonight to update you on the accomplishments and the activities of G-Park. So, G-Park is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, which means we are separate from the city, though we work closely with you all to make sure that our efforts align with the city master plan. We help to enhance the community quality of life for all Gaithersburg citizens by working with the community, with businesses and civic groups, to support and enhance, you guessed it, parks, arts and culture, and recreation. We do this by engaging in public and private partnerships, promoting awareness of cities' initiatives, and raising resources from fundraising dollars to grant funds, to volunteers, all to support these efforts. G-Park is led by a governing board that advises three special interest groups called alliances. Each alliance is led by a member of the governing board. In 2023, our nine-person board included Mary Fellig, the chair of G-Park, who unfortunately could not be here tonight, Richard Stang, our treasurer, Bridget Rider, chair of the Communications Subcommittee. We had three alliance chairs, including Denise Kaiser, the chair of the Alliance for Arts and Culture, Karen Matzkin, the chair of the Alliance for Recreation, and myself, the chair of the Alliance for Parks. We also had at-large members, Oscar Alvarenga, Mike Cocurros, and our new member Paula Ross of the Gaithersburg German Town Chamber of Commerce, joined this year. And sadly, in June, we said goodbye to Stuart Barr, an at-large member and chair of the Nomination Subcommittee, and we are saying farewell to Rich Stang at the end of the month. Rich has been a board member of 2018, has been invaluable as our treasurer and will sorely be missed. And I would be remiss if I did not mention the amazing support we get from so many of the city staff, in particular, this lovely lady sitting right beside me, who makes so many things happen. So what is G-Park? I get asked that a lot when I tell friends about Park Alliance projects. G-Park really isn't a what, it's more of a who, a why, and a how. G-Park is a dedicated group of volunteers that support ongoing city programs like youth sports, new initiatives like the art of trash grabbing, and we forge partnerships with other like-minded organizations, such as the Muddy Branch Alliance, among others. Why do we do this? We do this to build a healthier, happier community. By enhancing our parks, arts, and recreation, as we've just had this conversation, G-Park is making Gaithersburg a better place to live, work, and play. And how do we do this? Well, that's what we'll talk about next. Lots of pictures for y'all to look at, so. Collaboration is a key tenet of G-Park's work, both internally and externally. This year, G-Park collaborated on two important programs that cut across the parks, arts, and culture, and recreation divides. Our second annual photo contest was held to illustrate the connections between parks, recreation, and arts and culture, and to spread awareness of what we do across the community. We received nearly 100 entries, which was big. It's one of our winners, you can see on the screen, twice as many as we received the first year we held it, last year in 2022. And our winning photos were posted online, and they were also printed, printed and displayed in the Activity Center during the months of June and July. Another really exciting collaboration was Thrive Gaithersburg, which is celebrating and creating a strong community. This G-Park-wide effort was supported by the Parks Recreation and Culture and Stormwater Management Divisions, was held on a gorgeous day in October in Walder Park. This uber-local-free-family event focused on individual, community, and environmental wellness. We had nearly 200 neighbors and 30 volunteers attend the festival, and they enjoyed painting storm drain murals, chalk art, decorating trash grabbers, doing yoga, tai chi, zumba, and meeting representatives from local arts wellness and environmental groups. And of course, riding the youth services smoothie bike was a big hit. I missed, I ran out of smoothies before I got there. We also make connections, connecting with individuals and groups to spur civic and environmental stewardship and community engagement is a key goal for G-Park. Here are some of the ways we accomplish that goal in 2023. First, through the annual Storm Drain Art Contest. G-Park connected with professional and hobbyist artists, children, and adults to share an important environmental message, again, uniting parks, arts, and culture. This year's contest received a record 46 entries, more than double the amount in 2022, so you will see a pattern of growth here. Eleven designs were selected, and the artists and their friends and families and other volunteers painted storm drains at Diamond Farm Park and at Walder Park during our Thrive Gaithersburg event. The winning and honorable mention designs are featured in a free coloring book that will be distributed to local schools and is available at city facilities, and the coloring books are actually quite popular. Explore Gaithersburg Connected Individuals, oh, Explore Gaithersburg, another cross-program, connected individuals with city parks in several mapping excursions this year. We start in the center of the city and we move out for our parks, so we chose that Borra Park is where we started, and we go out in concentric circles each year. Crisman, Walder, and Observatory Parks were mapped on MLK Day of Service in January, and we have plans to map another three-ish parks this coming MLK Day. Working with the city to develop these maps into actual, take the information that we get and develop it into actual maps, we now have detailed trail maps for five of the city parks, and we've only got 25 more to go. The other ways that G-Park makes connections include our artist-decorated Little Free Libraries that are located in equity access areas of the city. We now have six artist-decorated libraries on city property. If you have not seen them, check them out, they are gorgeous. And another two ready to install, and four more ready to decorate and install. We also connect through the Artist Meetup Program and a new project that's just revving up the Social Justice Pollinator Garden. Now, I'm gonna go off script just briefly here. I will say, I just came from a meeting of the Montgomery County Water Quality Advisory Group, and Sam Briggs from the Isaac Walton League presented on the Salt Watch Program, and she basically told our group that Montgomery County has copied our Paint the Plows, which was an effort we did last year, and so Montgomery County is now following in Gaither's footsteps and combining art and environmental messaging, so.
And we might actually get to use the plows this year, so, yay.
Partnerships. So, over the last year, the alliances have expanded their outreach by participating in city events and reaching out to other groups. The Parks Alliance partnered with neighborhood groups and our fabulous partner, the Muddy Branch Starbucks, at Malcolm King and Morris Parks for our park cleanups this year. With the Muddy Branch Alliance, a natural partner, if you know my background, G-Park hosted an aid station at Moko Epic, which is super fun. It's an epic bike ride that covers 70 miles of trails through Montgomery County parks. Our aid station is actually ride-famous for its homemade cookies, and refueled nearly 400 bikers on the trail that day. G-Park also partnered with the Muddy Branch Alliance to host a native plant sale, you can see a picture, at the Activity Center in Borra Park. More than 1,100 plants were sold, and G-Park received a share of the profits. We plant natives, it's part of, as part of a collective effort to preserve biodiversity in Gaithersburg and maintain a healthy environment. But wait, I have breaking news. In 2023, G-Park did not receive 112,998 dollars in financial support, as you see on the screen. We actually received 113,998 dollars, thanks to two fundraisers that completed, that were completed after this PowerPoint was created. Our grant writing earns $57,750, which includes three sizable grants, $45,000 for the Gaithersburg History Project, $5,000 for a STEM project at the Observatory, and $3,000 for the Social Justice Pollinator Garden. Individual donations brought in $13,498, including the Roll for Kids Bowling Event, with staff and volunteers pictured here on the screen. Over the last two weeks, we received $1,000 from the Senior Silent Auction and Giving Tuesday. Sponsorships included $36,750 for the Book Festival and $6,000 for the Observatory's STEM project. $113,998 is 225% more than what G-Park normally raises in a year, and demonstrates what growing, the growing recognition and credibility of our organization. G-Park members continue to spread the word about G-Park through media attention, marketing efforts, and outreach. We really doubled down on the in-person connections this year with the Thrive Gaithersburg Program and by attending charity fairs at AstraZeneca, city events, and events sponsored by the Gaithersburg German Town Chamber of Commerce. Gaithersburg's other, G-Park's other accomplishments included, G-Park participated in, participating in Giving Tuesday, national event that occurred on November 28th. The Maryland State Arts Council awarded G-Park a Creative Program Award of $4,000 to underwrite artist fees for the Arts Barn's 20th anniversary. This year, we joined the Gaithersburg German Town Chamber of Commerce to further partnerships and alliances with the business community. It's gonna be a real focus on growth for us, we really want to connect strongly with businesses in the community, particularly to raise funds and awareness. G-Park used its senior center funds to purchase new chairs for the Benjamin Gaither Center Dining Room. And lastly, we successfully used PayPal for everything from Giving Tuesday donations to over $7,000 in donations for the Arts Barn Legacy Campaign, and that's a bigger accomplishment than you think, than you really think it is. Looking forward, the board and alliances have mapped out an exciting year where we plan to build on our successes of 2023, including another Thrive Gaithersburg event at a local park yet to be determined in the fall of 2024. Now, I'm just briefly gonna run through the alliance successes. The Parks Alliance is gonna continue its focus on Explore Gaithersburg, where we focus on raising community awareness of our city's parks and promoting exploration enjoyment of all of our city's parks for all of our city's people. The Parks Alliance will collaborate with the Arts and Culture Alliance in the city's Art in Public Places Program, on the second installment of the Artist-Made Trail Marker Project. If you have not gotten out to Borra Park and checked out the current ones, they're beautiful, that's where they are, right? The first, the first installment?
They haven't got, been putting yet, they're stuck in the fabricator's studio.
Okay, we'll let you know when they're out there. Encourage, we're going to encourage environmental stewardship and support of volunteers to adopt a park and keep it clean through another art of trash grabbing program. And Park Cleanup Days, you can see a picture of the art of trash grabbing, where we get people to decorate trash grabbers and then go use them to clean up trash. Strengthen our Explore Gaithersburg Park Passport, which premiered in 2022. The passport will identify all of the city parks and encourage people to use the many amenities that they offer. We'll also be working with the Stormwater Division and Old Town Youth Center on a Social Justice Pollinator Garden founded by that $3,000 grant from Riley's Way. The Alliance for Arts and Culture will be busy with continuing the Arts and the Environment Program with the Parks Alliance and the city's Stormwater Management Team, ramping up arts and the written word, which will feature artist-decorated Little Free Libraries in those equity access areas of the city, facilitating artist meetups to explore and capture the beauty of Gaithersburg parks and scenic areas, supporting artist-made trailmakers for local parks, and managing fundraising and grant-writing efforts for city initiatives. Finally, last but not least, the Recreation Alliance will continue to explore opportunities that encourage the community to get outside and exercise, as well as fundraising for city initiatives. Some of our wellness endeavors include coordinated family fun walks through city parks with hands-on environmental health and science activities, Bring Your Kids, farm-to-table cooking demonstrations in connection with the city's farmers' markets, Bring Your Appetites. Fundraising efforts are gonna focus on underwriting swim lessons for children who are unable to afford them, offsetting the cost of dance recitals, costumes for the city dance programs, funding sports scholarships for children and youth, and via an online auction, creating a scholarship program for seniors, so they can participate in trips coordinated by the Benjamin Gaither Center. Our first silent auction was held last month and brought in $756. In closing, we have the following goals for 2024. We're gonna continue to build out our alliances and our board, try to replace the losses that we've had, expand community and business partnerships, as I mentioned, to support projects financially and mobilize the community, pursue creative fundraising opportunities using, using social media and outreach strategies, our social media presence is fairly strong, and continue to make equity and diversity a priority in both board and alliance membership, external partnerships, and in program outreach. We'll also share our expertise broadly through speaking opportunities with other municipalities, community groups, businesses, corporations, and nonprofits. So, thank you all, I know this is the last of a very long evening for you, for your attention. We're all having a lot of fun and are excited about all that's possible. I do have an ask. When you meet people that want to connect, if their passion is parks, arts, or recreation in our city, send them to us, send them to me. We'd like to help them realize the benefits of really plugging in all that we have to offer here in Gaithersburg. Any questions?
Tracy, thank you very much for the presentation, and thanks to all of your fellow G-Park colleagues. Did you say Social Justice Pollinator Garden?
Yes, I did.
What is a Social Justice Pollinator? What does that even mean?
We have a student from Sandy Spring Friends School who wanted to do that. He applied for a grant and got the grant, and so it will be working with the youth over at Rock, Old Town Youth Center, and they will be talking about the, the native plants and just working through some larger concepts. It's, it's being worked on by a wonderful guy, Mike Wayan, who's in Stormwater Division.
Yeah.
And he hasn't given me all the good stuff yet, I don't know a lot about it yet, but we'll be actually presenting to you as we get a little further along.
Okay.
It's gonna be right there out in front, where there's a lot of sun in front of the Old Town Youth Center.
All right.
Yeah.
You learn new stuff every day.
Yeah, and I, yeah, I don't, I don't know, I don't know a lot either, I'm afraid, sorry.
Neil?
All right, so, thanks for the presentation, and really, this, this organization is getting more and more impressive as time goes by, so thanks for all your good work. I have a specific question, what is the Observatory STEM Project about?
Oh, may I say?
Yes, you may.
So, in April of 2024, we will have a total eclipse, solar eclipse, and in order to, you may remember, when we had the last eclipse, we had 3,000 people come to the observatory that day. So, the museum's getting out ahead of that, and they're going to purchase us appropriate still, glasses for every child in Gaithersburg, in the city of Gaithersburg Elementary Schools, plus their teachers, develop a packet that goes to the teachers for teaching, but also a communication in multiple languages for parents to explain the, the health risks and let them know they can use those glasses, too. So, our goal was to get, I believe, $14,600. So far, we're up to $11,000, and I think we can get the rest. That means we can get way out to like 20,000 kids rather than, you know, 15, but if we have to scale back, we'll scale back. But, yeah, we've done pretty well with that.
Very cool, thank you.
Yes, so get your, get your STEM glasses now.
I'm gonna go.
Before they go, you know, before there's a run on them.
Yeah.
Jimmy?
I just quick, kind of housekeeping question, 50-some K in grants, how many different grants were there, is the total up to 50?
You would ask that question. I think we have about, I have this written down, because I was afraid somebody would ask me that specific question. No, 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 I, I paid.
Well, one grant was $45,000 by itself, correct?
One of them is a big one.
So, I think it's three grants.
And then there's.
The Riley, the, the Pollinator Garden, the STEM Project.
There we go, yeah.
So, yeah, it's three sizable grants, $45,000 for the Gaithersburg History Project, $5,000 for the STEM Project.
$4,000 for the creativity grant, and 750 from the Potomac Chapter of the National Railway to the museum.
And $3,000 for the Social Justice Pollinator Garden.
Five grants.
And when, are you constrained by the number of grants or grant-writing capacity?
Grant-writing capacity.
Okay.
Because staff and board members write it, so right now, they're writing one for the swim classes.
And I'm gonna start a new one this month with Denise, we'll, so, just so you know, there's another one coming.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And we don't give grants.
Correct.
So, you have to make your own money, and we'll hold it for you, and, and be the fiduciary agent, but we don't give out grants.
Yeah, we pull in grants.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Jim.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, Tracy, and Shelley. Just a quick comment, as I'm looking at the slides and pursuing additional funding opportunities, it just made me think, you know, maybe this could be an opportunity for the barbecue competition, that we're looking to connect to something, and maybe this could be a fundraising opportunity for G-Park, so, just thought I would throw that out there.
Thank you very much, Jim.
All right. Not saying anything for anybody else, there's only staff in the room. Let me see, so I'm assuming nobody wants to testify among our staff. Let me just go on to Zoom. If there's anybody on Zoom who wants to speak, just use the raise hand function. Go in once, go in twice, okay. Then, we will, we thank you very much, we look forward to working with G-Park a lot in the next year, in the next few years, actually.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Okay, so I will remind everybody, we do not have work sessions either of, or meetings either the next two weeks because of our holiday schedule. We will have an executive session immediately after this meeting, which we're about to adjourn. I will remind everybody that Winter Lights is open through New Year's Eve, and you have, it's great, but you gotta get your tickets in advance, so don't just show up there and try to get tickets there. It's gonna be, it's gonna be terrible if you try to do that. Go online, get your tickets, and go to Winter Lights, it's much easier that way. Want to wish everyone a Happy Hanukkah, which is currently going on, Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy New Year. We are so lucky to be in this community together, and I hope everybody will take a little time to pause during the holiday season and, and reflect on that. Until next time, let's do great things, Gaithersburg, we are adjourned.